All right. Good evening. Hey, that was actually great, everybody. I'm sorry to interrupt conversation. Typically, we come in here and it's nice and quiet, so it's happy that y'all were visiting amongst yourselves this evening. Let's see here. Good evening. Today is Monday, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is seven P. M. This meeting of the Prosper ISD Board of Trustees is hereby called to order according to Texas Government Code, Chapter five-five-one. Representing the quorum this evening is Mr. Dial, Mrs. Dixon, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Linker, Mr. Van Wolf, and I am Bill Beavers. Mr. Linker, would you please pray for us this evening?
Sure. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and this time together. Lord, thank you for this honor of serving this incredible community. We ask that you keep your hand over those that are dealing with an illness, with a loss. We also pray that you continue to look over our students and staff in the last few months of this school year, Lord. Thank you for all of your blessings. We ask tonight for wisdom and discernment for our board that we make the best decisions possible for our district. We love you, in your name, amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we've got some work to do on that one, everyone.
Curveball there, man.
We'll get the words up.
That's right. We'll get them up. Hey, our kids do it every day, so we should be doing it too.
Appreciate the curveball there, all right.
Did we not do it last month?
No.
Or didn't? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm throwing curveballs at y'all.
It's all right. Keeping us on our toes.
We're having fun tonight. That's right. Yes, I am. Mrs. Dixon, you've got the board vision.
Yes, absolutely. The board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Thank you very much. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, which can be found in Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisitions in real estate, school safety and security, and matters requiring legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for the public to view at least seventy-two hours before the meeting. Up in front of you, you have some important dates coming up, and then that will take us right into celebrations.
Yes, sir. So we have several tonight. As our district continues to grow and expand, we have some new leaders on the horizon. And so I'd like Jeff Smith, Aiden Kelly Smith. So you may recognize Kelly Smith. She is our P.E. teacher at Baker Elementary and actually former Teacher of the Year at Baker. So she's been with us a bit in seven years. And so you may have recognized Jeff Smith also. He was here for about a year and a half and then left and went to the wrong P.I.S.D. So I'm joking about that. The great thing about Jeff, if you know him, just long time history in Texas football, but Texas athletics. So twenty-eight years of athletic experience, standing with boys and girls athletics. Previously, the Assistant Athletic Director in Prosper ISD with our fabulous Coach Little, and then the Athletic Director in the other P.I.S.D. for the last four years, meaning Plano. But we're glad that you found your way back. I was saying today, we had a leadership retreat, and I was saying today to everyone as I introduced Jeff is that for the last four years, whenever Plano, a Plano school, was playing a Prosper ISD school, I would typically make my way over to Jeff to say, where are you coming back? It only took me four years to get him back. But during the interview, I did remind him that he will always be the number-two Smith. In Prosper ISD, this is the number-one. And he said, as those things go, as the way it has always been my entire career life. And I was like, as long as we got that straight, we're good to go. So we're very excited that Jeff is back with us and will be leading our athletics with excellence. And we're glad, too. The bonus is that we'll get to see Kelly at more athletic events now. Thank you so much. Glad to hear it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And then next up, we have a Director of Professional Learning. This is a position that we have needed for quite some time at Prosper ISD and one that we are so excited. Dr. Meredith Clark is joining us. Poor Dr. Clark. When I interviewed her, I got really excited about all the things we're doing in Prosper and then I just took over her interview. I got to tell her everything that we were doing because I think I'd already decided she was getting the job and she's probably thinking, I don't know if I got the job or not, but this lady is really excited about it. It is true. So Dr. Clark comes to us. Her career includes professional development specialists, professional learning and curriculum writing, facilitator for Regions ten and eleven and four, so that's down in the Austin area, ESL teacher and Spanish teacher at the high school and college level. Most recent role, Master Consultant of Fine Arts and World Languages with Region ten, which is our service support center. And then her knowledge of professional development, curriculum design, and professional learning communities, which we are very invested in in Prosper ISD, has been very instrumental in the development of the first statewide curriculum framework for world languages and the first statewide world languages PLC for our staff or the staff at Region ten and the first statewide think tank of the world language education. And you are the first professional learning director in Prosper ISD. So very excited. Dr. Clark is with us. And I didn't realize when I interviewed her. So I sit on a committee at Region ten because, you know, they always need people to sit on things. And then when you're a new superintendent, you're like, sure, I'll help out. And then you realize that you're going to be on it for like the rest of your life. So I had the joy at one of those meetings, I thought, gosh, who is this lady? She is super smart. And this was several years ago, but it ended up that it was Dr. Clark because when she came in to interview, I said, didn't you present? She goes, like, yes, I've met you before. And so super impressed with her and then excited now that we're going to get the benefit of her higher knowledge and expertise. So we're very glad that you're here.
Thank you. We do.
And then we have our Director of Student Services, and this is a familiar face to you, Justin Goldsmith. Family's ready to go. Jack's ready to go. So Justin Goldsmith, who's been serving as the Principal of Reynolds Middle School, twenty years in education. Have you really known? Gosh, say that. Twenty years in education. He served as a fifth and eighth grade social study, fifth through eighth grade social studies teacher, coached middle school and varsity football, basketball, and track, and then Assistant Principal in Cradle ISD, and then made his move to Prosper ISD and landed at Reynolds Middle School with Dr. Greg Bradley when he was the principal there. And then now, Justin has served as the principal for seven years at Reynolds Middle School, which that has gone by, it feels like really, really quickly. So we're excited that he is now going to take on the role of Director of Student Services Assistant. His lovely family is with us. They are students in the district and we're very glad to have them. And of course, his lovely wife, Tara. We love having her support because you know there's a lot of support behind the scenes that goes on with our leaders. So we're glad. Congratulations. Very well deserved honor. And you might be wondering, well, who's going to run Reynolds now? Thanks, Joe, and Prosper ISD suggests Mullins. Yes. All the crew. I haven't met the whole crew.
You told me to bring everyone, so I did.
It's a family affair. See, this is part of the trip. We bring up the family and then we tell publicly in front of everyone, like, no, help them. And so it's an issue at a higher level. So introduction.
My mom.
Dad. John is marrying, and then Ashley and Brenna Hoffe.
Excellent. I've heard wonderful things about you. And Jess has been such a huge asset to Prosper ISD for many years, from Rogers to Reynolds. And then most recently, she got to do some interning with me. So we've spent a lot of time together recently. So trying to get her to this place to say, I'll be a principal, I know that there was a lot of encouragement behind the scenes from family, but we're really excited that she was willing to take on this great challenge and be able to continue the excellence that Mr. Oldtmeyer set up at Reynolds Middle School. So sixteen years in education. Jess has served as a math teacher, a middle school instructional coach, adjunct educational professor, and assistant principal. The last five years, serving as an assistant principal at Reynolds Middle School, and now will take over the helm and be the principal. So congratulations and want to say thank you to each of you for the support because it is ongoing, as we know, as educators that we have had for all the years that we're willing to serve. So thank you for that. And it ends. We have a Crest Award winner, Council Excellence. So Brett Stinson. Bryce and Angie Long.
What?
Angie Long. Excellent. We're glad that you're here. We're very excited. Brett serves as the Counselor at Windsong Ranch Elementary. And she, I got notification, gosh, it was probably several months ago, and she had been recognized and has received a Crest Award. And so the Crest recognizes exemplary programs in Texas based on the Texas Model for Comprehensive School Council. This award indicates campus and council leadership and advocacy for serving students in the school community. And this is the very first time that Prosper ISD has ever received this award. And I know I'm competitive. And I saw a post and there was like, I'm not going to say what school district it was, but they had all these counselors and they got the Crest Award. And I was like, oh, well, that's something we should do as well. And so we're so very proud of you. Thank you so much for all that you're doing. And I know that it's not just Windsong that's getting the benefit of your work, but I know that you're such a collaborative counselor who wants to share and really make all counseling better for all kids in Prosper ISD. So thank you for that. Congratulations. And we're glad you're here. So we're celebrating, and we're going to turn our focus to students and some of our amazing staff members because we have TMEA All-State. So I would first like to ask that PHS come up? The Prosper High School, I think I'm supposed to say it correctly. How are you? You're looking very nice this evening. So Aiden Hansen, you all may have been able to hear him sing at some point in time. And Jacob Morris as well. They're both two of our most talented musicians in this entire district. But Aiden will forever be SpongeBob SquarePants because he was in the musical SpongeBob SquarePants and that was the moment that I thought, who is that? He's incredible. And then his journey was just continued. Jacob, I did not see you in SpongeBob SquarePants. You deserve your talents, too. So Crystal Chamberlain and Tate King are our Directors at PHS. So if you want to tell the audience a little bit about these two gentlemen and then really their level of commitment because this is not something that I kind of show up and I sing and I get awards. There's a ton of work that's involved to be able to get to the All-State level.
Sure. So over the course of about four or five auditions this fall, our All-State singers have auditioned through several different levels involving learning music and sight reading, a lot of that on their own time and on top of all of the other amazing things that these gentlemen and our other performers do. And so what I just would say to you about them is they're dream students most days. But the level of dedication, the work ethic, that we're really proud, we feel like this process of becoming an All-Stater does for them. But it shows the best of what our students can do in Prosper and shows really, we give them a little bit of help and they take it to the next level. So there's all sorts of numbers that people smarter than me will probably remember in a minute, but we're so proud of these two gentlemen and how great they represented us last week, two weeks ago at the All-State Convention.
Absolutely amazing. So do y'all want to sing for them? You don't have to. Okay, we'll take a pic for the children. Next up, we have Walnut Grove High School. So you will be forward. So this is Sarah Jen. And Sarah Jen is an All-Stater as well. First time in the school history. So I know that Walnut Grove refers to a lot of their excellence and what they are reaching towards as the standard. You all even have a banner in your school. And so you are one of the very first students to be in All-State Choir. So congratulations.
Tell us a little bit about the process, please.
They might want to put you off, especially students. They get nervous. I'm not nervous.
Well, this is my second year doing All-State Process. So and then my class year, I kind of, I think I made it to like the third round of auditions and I kind of had like a sight reading freakout. But I think the process that I like took to, for one, better my sight reading and two, I was a lot more confident because this is my second time doing it. I think I was really, I was really lucky to have made it as a top four. So I'm excited for the next few years to make it to All-State.
I'm sure you will. We do have an amazing future. And Mr. Coolie also, that truly supports you and champions you to make sure that you reach your high level with all the other choir students. So congratulations. And it doesn't stop there. We have Rock Hill High School also with TMEA All-State. Of course, students appear and directors. Tell me about the presence that you can have with TMEA and really connecting at the state level with leadership. And so he was asking really for my permission to say, yes, you can go and do these things. Because there is a level of commitment of time away from the school district when one of our leaders takes this on. But I was so honored and of course humble that he even came to me to see that ask. And of course, the answer immediately was yes because if you've really met any of our choir directors, it's just next level, which is why we have All-State TMEA Award winners. So Josh McGuire, in addition to the All-State honors that he has brought forward to Prosper ISD for numerous years, we'd also like to recognize you for your role within TMEA. You've served as the Region Vocal Chair, All-State Choir Section Leader, All-State Choir Organizer, TMEA Convention Vocal Division Clinic and Convention Coordinator and Area Vocal Chair. He currently serves as the Vice President and Vocal Division Chair. Did I get it all right? So when you talk about a passionate educator, a dedicated educator, that's next level because this is not coming with a ton of payment. It's coming with, because of the passion that he has for making sure that music education, choir specifically, is on the forefront in the minds of those in the state of Texas. And it only comes through servant leaders who are willing to really go that extra mile and court in to not only Prosper ISD kids, but kids across this entire state. So thank you for that. I didn't want that to be lost. Turn to the real stars of the show. First of all, Heather Char, who is our Assistant Director, who also does a phenomenal job along with Mr. McQuire. And the fact that we need assistance is incredible because not too long ago in this history, we were splitting, trying to make the choir program become a thing. And so to be able to see the way that it's grown and blossomed and truly impacted our students is phenomenal. So I don't want it to be lost on how very thankful we are for each and every one of you. Ashley and Amelia, stars of our show, tell us a little bit about your TMEA experience. And Ashley, this is not your first time. Now, she's a senior, though.
I'm going to introduce.
Okay, please, take over. Like, you're in charge of like everything.
The numbers are, we had close to fourteen thousand students that auditioned across the state this year for six hundred and four chairs to be in four All-State Choirs. And our students qualified for three of those. Ashley is actually our first two-year All-Stater, more than one year in Prosper ISD. So we're really excited about that. And she's also our first one at Rock Hill that's made the mixed choir, which is the top, the top two-hundred-and-forty chairs, sorry, I had to think about that, in the state. So that's a really big deal.
So I want to thank the All-State High School for then representing through the talent of our amazing staff and then our incredible students. And so when you think about that excellence all the way across all settings, I could not be more proud. So thank you to each and every one of you.
Great work.
And I'd like to add on our Prosper ISD board tonight as a title of celebration. So they've been selected for the Raise Your Hand Texas Trustee Advocate.
There might have been one other group in there.
You know what? There's the band now.
Hey, there they are.
And one of my monster brain towers.
Go Benny. Way to go, Benny. That's right.
I'm so sorry. I do apologize. I got ahead of myself. So this is Benny Mu. And if you don't know Benny, he is not only a phenomenal musician, but he is off-the-charts smart, like physics-level smart, like change-the-world smart. Right, Benny? Yes. I've seen this firsthand. And then Erin Risenbrink, who is our band director at Prosper High School. Erin Duckers not with us tonight. And then Sarah also, but we know they're with us in spirit. But All-State Band, this is recent, right off, hot off the presses, right? Not two, last week? Two weeks ago? So tell us a little bit, I guess, Mr. Risenbrink or Benny, about the All-State Band process and how you reached to that level.
Yeah, the process is really similar to what we've heard from choir. This year, I think at the state level total, there are about thirty thousand band students that auditioned across the state. And through our own region level, Benny placed first out of all of Prosper, McKinney, and Little Elm and Frisco ISD. And then second overall at the area level and then sixth overall at the state level. Which puts him in about the top one to two percent of high school musicians in the process.
Very impressive, as our students continue to be at that, at his next level. So and you can see how high the honor is. One student is standing here right now. So congratulations.
There you go, man.
Congratulations. Sorry about that. So now I will talk about the Prosper ISD School Board unless someone mouths to me that there's something else.
Skip this part. We're all good.
Okay, great. So Board of Trustees have been selected for Raise Your Hand Texas. If you're not familiar with Raise Your Hand Texas, you're probably familiar with H.P. Stores. Anybody? Yeah. Grocery stores funded by Charles Budd, who is the owner, who is a huge advocate of Texas Public Schools. And he is one of the key factors of Raise Your Hand Texas. So they do a lot of work, not only for school boards, but also for different leaders, teacher programs that they have, and really pour and invest a lot into Texas Public Schools for the sake of our five-point-five million children in Texas Public Schools to this day. So Prosper ISD has been selected to the Raise Your Hand Texas Trustee Advocate in preparation for the eighty-ninth legislative session. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar, but during the eighty-eighth legislative session, it was not a very successful session for Texas Public Schools. There was not much that came out that really moved the dial, even though there was a thirty-two-billion-dollar surplus sitting in which that could have been pushed towards public schools. But it was not. And part of that is the ability to be able to advocate for our schools and really talk about the power of what you just saw tonight, whether it's Penny or Ashley or any of our other amazing students and then along the hands of amazing educators who are really making that magic in those moments happen. So our Prosper ISD board went through a very competitive selection process. So twenty-five school district applicants from across Texas competing for only eight program slots. This initiative trains Texas school districts and their locally elected trustees to educate, engage, and activate their school districts and local communities to amplify their voices in state public education policy and advocacy. One of our greatest assets is the fact that we have a community that gets out when we vote. And when we get out and vote, our legislators take note of that. And a key piece of that voting base that we have has to do with the advocacy of this amazing school board because we have a perfect mixture here in Prosper ISD because our schools are one of the top in the state, if not the top in the state. So when we are advocating, it's not a complaint. It's not a whine. It's an actual justification of why we need to pour into our Texas Public Schools because we want what we have for our kids, which is the best, to be even better. And that comes through the power and the voice of each of these board members and then each of you as community members, parents, and then our students who will one day be able to also advocate as a voter. So very important work. So we're excited to jump into this. There is a time commitment on their part and as we all know, we do not receive a dime for their time. And we will not receive a dime for their time during this advocate program. But we're so very thankful to each of you for really giving this next level to really make sure that the voice of Prosper ISD is heard down in Austin where it matters most. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for those. Let's see here.
Thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for those. Let's see here, we do not have anyone signed up to speak for public comment tonight. We will go into informational reports, but real quick, I'm going to hold a one- to two-minute just recess in case any of our students or families. I'm sure that y'all would find all this riveting this evening, but y'all are welcome to leave if you want to. Students, thank y'all for coming in tonight. Hey, art students, especially what y'all do makes the world a prettier place, and we appreciate y'all using your talents here in Prosper ISD. Ferguson, current student enrollment.
Yes, so our enrollment continues to go up. We have crossed over the 29,000 mark, 29,025, I believe, was our last count. Yes, right there. And so that gives us an add of 3,614 additional students. We continue to be one of the fastest-growing districts in the state of Texas. And so as evidence of our amazing students tonight, parents want to be a part of this school district and have their kids here. And so we are welcoming 3,614 students with open arms. Yes, so our 2019 bond, I think we're trying to get the video up just to give y'all an update on all the projects in that 2019 bond. All projects are on schedule, and we are making progress as we continue to get those buildings ready. Obviously, Mosley will have Jackson and Jones that opens this year, and then Mosley will open the following year, just as a reminder. Now, Mr. Crownover is going to give us a required presentation on the Texas Academic Performance Report.
Thank you, Dr. Ferguson, members of the board. You're going to see a lot of good information tonight, a lot of good numbers that you've already seen. But I'd be remiss if I didn't start by saying it takes a whole team of people to get there, to show the success that our kids have had. And so it starts, any educator will tell you, first and foremost, the most important person in a student's life is their parent. And so we have a large number of dedicated parents here in Prosper who are very involved. We get to partner with them every day on their kids' education. So that's, that's number one. And then the second most important is the teacher in that classroom. And we have, without a doubt, the best group of teachers in the state of Texas. I'm comfortable saying that. I'll put them up against anybody. And so that combination of involved parents and awesome teachers is why you see the good news you'll see tonight. So we're blessed to have all that here in Prosper. And then the campus leadership, again, I'd put our principals up against any, any group of principals in the state. They do amazing work. All the support folks at the campus, assistant principals, et cetera, do amazing work there. And then the folks I get to work with in, here in this lovely building, that provide a lot of support to the campuses as well. Too many to name, but, but the curriculum and instruction department under the leadership of Ms. Biggs do unbelievable work. The school leadership area with, with Mr. McLaughlin and his group do tremendous work. And then the special education folks with, with Dr. Hickey. And so, again, we, I could stay up here for an hour and list all the people that do awesome work here. But it's important that you know this is a team effort, and that the good results we see here are, are the result of a lot of, a lot of folks' hard work. Additionally, it's important because you're going to see a lot of stuff here that is related to numbers, related to STAR tests and things like that, which is important. We firmly believe here in Prosper that our kids are more than a test score. And so, again, we could stand here all day talking about all the other ways our kids are successful here in Prosper. And so this tells a part of the story, but certainly not the whole story. So there's, there's a lot of things our kids do. We try to meet them where they are. We're worried about the, the whole kid. And so just, just so you know, while this, this is good, we believe there's a lot more to, to student success than this. So having said that, let us dive into the, what we're going to call the Texas Academic Performance Report, or taper in the biz. And so a couple of things to know about this before we jump in is, this is a 30,000-foot view. This is, this is information that the state requires us to present once a year. And so there is so, we, we could, again, we could be here forever, going into all the different data we look at, all the different ways our kids are successful. So this is the stuff that the state says we need to present. So we're looking at a very, very high level here. In addition, what is required under this report is lagging data. So it's information that is, is going to be always at least a year old. So, so you're not necessarily going to get the most up-to-date data, although what we did where we could is, is try to provide you with the most recent information that we could, just so you have the, as, as whole of the picture as you can have. And so we plugged it in where we could. But we'll start with the STAR test. And so this is obviously going to be lagging data, because all we have is, is from last year. And so the, the performance standards that the state gives us for, for our students is whether they approach, meet, or master their grade level. And so what you'll see on this slide here is, and there's a few that are going to tell the same story, is Prosper ISD is way ahead of the curve on both the state, compared to both the state and the region. So we, you know, we do a very good job in that area. You see, there's ELAR, but, but it's the same story with all of these. There's, there's the math scores that are all way ahead of the state and region. Same with science, you can see there. And then, of course, same with social studies. But it's important to note that even though those numbers are as, as good or better than anybody in the state, we don't, we don't rest on that. So there is, there's a lot of work that our CNI folks and our school leadership folks do to try to improve on that even more. You see, there's always room for, for improvement. And our standard in Prosper is as high as it can be. So we're not satisfied with, with these, with these, even though these numbers are very good, we're always striving to, to raise that standard. And just wanted to give you kind of a representative sample of the kind of work that we do. Again, we could, we could have had slides and slides of this stuff, but we do this focused literacy and numeracy work with our kids to try to improve performance there. We have a K-12 workshop task force, again, designed to, to work with our kids in their writing. Our elementary and secondary literacy coaches do a lot of targeted work with kids in schools. And then our math coordinators go through training on this mathematical thinking through line to help our math teachers target that area. So again, there's a lot more than that, but just wanted you to know that even though those numbers are good, it's not good enough. And so we're, we're continuing to strive to meet every kid where they are. This would be the part of the presentation where normally you would see the district and campus ratings that TEA provides. As I think you're fully aware, there's pending litigation on this matter right now that has prevented, the court has prevented TEA from releasing this data publicly. So we don't have this, this information right now. Who knows where the, the litigation is going to end, but for the time being, this information's not, not being provided. Not sure it ever will be. But, but for now, we don't, we don't have that data. But again, for, for all the reasons I mentioned, it doesn't, it doesn't really change what we're doing every day. We're still striving to make sure our kids are getting the best education they can. The next section we're, we're required to report is this PM financial, PM's financial standard report. The good news is, every couple of months, Ms. Sees stands up here and gives you a tremendous amount of information related to finances. So there's a link there that, that you have access to if you want to dig into it, but you're not going to see anything there. You don't see routinely that's, that's presented. We're, we're very transparent with that, and certainly very good stewards of taxpayer money. But that's something we're required to show you. So just, that, that's up there. But again, you get a lot more information from, from Ms. Sees every, every couple of months. Our accreditation status is the next thing we're required to report. So there's some things TEA considers when it comes to accreditation. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because, as it won't surprise you to know, Prosper ISD is accredited. So there's, we don't have to worry about any of those other ratings. We have that A1 rating, the accountability rating from, from last year. So we're, we're in very good shape there. No, no, no worry about our accreditation status. The next section are the campus performance objectives. This is where the campus improvement plan comes in. And as you guys know, what we've done this year that's a little different, that's been very successful, is we've, we've done this in the context of a campus plan on a page. And so that has been, we've gotten excellent feedback from our principals about that. I know the board members have done instructional walks where what I think you're seeing is that what you see on that campus plan on a page, you're seeing that in action in the schools. And so that's, that's very much by design. And so those have been very successful. We do that for departments too, just, just so you're aware. So our departments have plans on a page that guides that work. So, so that's been a very positive thing for us this year. I want to talk about a few things on this slide here. So this is the campus performance objectives for third grade reading and math for, for STAR, which is the, you know, the important grade. And a few things to note. One, you'll notice that that 2021 number is a lot lower than the rest of the numbers. It might not surprise you to learn that that is because the year before that, our kids weren't in school for a few years. If you guys remember COVID, I believe, was the name of the pandemic that was around. So when kids weren't in school, what you saw was a direct reflection in that performance. And so that, that didn't just prosper. That happened across the country. When kids weren't in school, you see those scores drop. But to me, an encouraging and very cool thing is, look at, look at that jump to 2022, and how all those numbers, both in the region, state, and Prosper shot up. And the only difference between 21 and 22 is kids are back in school. So it's, it shows you what an awesome job our educators do when they get a chance to be in front of kids and educate them. And so while, again, we're, we're going to be, it's an uphill battle on fighting the, the COVID loss for, for these test scores. That's going to happen for a little while. Every, every district's going to be dealing with that. You can see, we, we're shooting up and heading in the right direction, even though we, we kind of started out behind. You'll see there, we, we've set a goal of 75 in reading and 80 in STAR. We're not there, but that's certainly the goal that our CNI folks and our school leadership are striving toward, because again, we, we're going to set the standard as high as we can here in Prosper. And then on the, the CCMR ready ratings here, you can see, again, we're way ahead of the state and, and region as far as that goes. This is one of the pieces of contention in the legislation, as I think you probably know, that what TEA did was the, the, the mark used to be 60% is what it was for a long time. They raised it to 88%, but they did so after the data we were going to be looking at was from kids that had already graduated. So when they raised it to 88, we didn't have any chance to do anything about that, right? So you can see, we, we're way above the 60, but not quite to 88. And so obviously, with Ms. Anderson and Dr. Mueller and our team, we're making sure we're heading toward that 88%. But this, that, that's one of the things that was part of the lawsuit, is that they arbitrarily, we thought, kind of raised that, raised that number. But again, we're still, we're, we're successful there, but there's room to improve for sure to get to that, that 88%. And again, just so you know, we're not resting on laurels on any of this. The, the professional learning communities, which I know you're all aware of, have been very, very successful. What Bill and Teresa and their teams have really been hyper-focused on is making sure that that's what our, what our principals and teachers are, are doing this year, and try not to go in 50 different directions, but really focus on this idea of professional learning communities where teachers are collaborating and, and providing the best possible outcomes for kids. We now have a dedicated CCMR coordinator, as you know, with Dr. Mueller, and then, and then a district team. So the, the importance of CCMR is not going away. And in fact, it's only getting more and more important as we, as we head down the road. So we're certainly focusing on that, not just to try to hit an 88% score, because that's best for kids. We want them to be ready for college, career, military, once they leave here. So we're, there's a heavy emphasis on that. Each high school campus is now authorized to administer that Texas Success Initiative Assessment, which is designed to test college readiness essentially in, in a few subjects. So obviously, the more data we can gather on college readiness, the more we can intervene and make sure kids are getting what they need. And then, of course, we have, we're creating more options every year to, to increase that CCMR status. Again, not just to get to an 88% goal, but to make sure kids are ready when they, when they leave us. The next section is the special education termination status, which we don't have any information on. So we're going to skip right past that because the state hadn't given it to us. We have to provide a report on violent criminal incidents. And as you can see, we have an extremely low rate of that here in Prosper. Our, our schools, fortunately, as a parent of a student in this district, are very, very, very safe. And so we're, you know, we're proud of that. The next section is student performance in post-secondary institutions. And this is one of those things we have to, to share with you. It doesn't necessarily tell the whole story because we are, we gather data from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board about student performance once they leave us and go to college, but it's only for public schools in Texas. So Texas four-year, Texas two-year public schools. As you all well know, we have a lot of students that go to private schools, a lot of students that go to public schools outside of Texas. So that wouldn't all be here. So it's a piece of the puzzle, but not the whole puzzle. And you've got a link there. If you really want to dig into this data, you're free to do it. But essentially, this is kind of what, what we're, we're required to show you. You can see our kids that go to four-year public universities here in Texas tend to do very well grade-wise. You know, in full transparency, there appears to be some struggle with kids that go to two-year public colleges. And so to that end, we're, we do a lot of, a lot of intervention work to try to, try to help with that. Certainly, we talked about increasing those CCMR options, college prep courses with math and ELAR, which is the thing ten, the kids tend to struggle with the most. We provide no-cost SAT, ACT, TSIA prep programs for our kids so they can be ready. And then, of course, we're always looking to expand CTE programs and pathways, because like I said, this is something that the state of Texas is pushing and that we believe is very important for our kids, to make sure they have as many options as they can to be successful when they leave Prosper. So the summary of all this is, the numbers look good, but certainly there's, there's room to improve. And our CNI folks, our school leadership folks are very aware of that. And so we are constantly striving to, to set that standard high here in Prosper. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Crownover, for that information. Truly appreciate that. And I think what you've noted, just with the hard work of all of our different leaders, but specifically just for community, parents that may be watching, when you see graduating class of 2021, and we're about to graduate 2024 class.
Right.
So we've got lagging data on that. And then certainly the strides that have been made. But I'm, I'm excited about seeing where our data points are sitting moving forward, especially as we do more ongoing assessment, because that's one of the faults of the Texas Education Agency, is the one-time test, and it happens at the end of the year. We many times refer to it as autopsy, because the school year has ended, the kids are moving on to the next grade level, but we have dead data from a year past. And then trying to make decisions on kids and their learning off of dead information, it's not a good way to instruct them. So really, our approach in Prosper ISD is having an ongoing assessment, a continuous improvement cycle, so that we're really using our information and our data to really drive instruction in what's happening with each of our kids within their learning plans. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Crown.
Okay, that takes us to our consent agenda portion. Everybody has seen, have a couple things in there. Is there any questions, or would someone like to bring forward a motion?
I recommend that we approve the consent agenda as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is all six of us this evening, none opposed. All right, and then we have nine on action items. Dr. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Beavers, here to talk about a couple of projects we have going. The first is a guaranteed maximum price for Reynolds Middle School. As you know, we are working feverishly to get some class, additional classrooms open. So this is going to be phase one of two phases of Reynolds Middle School addition and renovation to be starting soon. And so we have members from POG here tonight, also our friends from Huckabee, who are drawing as fast as we can come up with the plans. The hope is to break ground quickly, maybe within the next two weeks. The finish of six classrooms at Reynolds Middle School is August 1st, 2024. So we're going to go quickly, and because we need it, our kids need it. And so we are hoping to break ground ASAP. The GMP price before you tonight, $4,301,232. I want to make you aware that this bid will come, I mean, this, this number will complete bidding on Tuesday, due to the fact that we need to go as soon as possible. We're bringing you this number tonight, asking for your approval so we can start the project as soon as we can get people on site to turn dirt. We will almost assuredly bring back to you a deductive change order in this job, because we, as we always do on these, we, we build in a little margin here, so we, so I'm not bringing you a bad number. But we're going to come back. But we're going to come back and almost assuredly have a deductive change order because we probably built in a little more here than we need. Also, though, the other reason that we've done this, on this and the Rogers project, is that tonight, we're talking about phase one, but there is going to be a phase two. And we wanted to make sure if we needed to do anything, get something started on phase two because phase two is hopefully going to be back in the summer to ask for a GMP approval to go from August 1 to August 1 on phase two. There's a lot of work going on at Reynolds this summer. We're going to move a lot of portables around, a lot of things to prepare for that. And so I'm asking for your approval tonight to start the Reynolds project at the price listed.
All right, while we have Dr. Bradley up there, is there any questions for him before we make a motion on this?
Appreciate the explanation, Dr. Bradley.
Sure.
Okay, is there a motion for the GMP on Reynolds Middle School?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the amendment to the guaranteed maximum price of $4,301,232 for Reynolds Middle School as presented by administration.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Any discussion? Hearing none, hold the vote, all in favor? That is all six of us, none opposed. So Reynolds is good to go, which will take us to Rogers.
Very similar conversation with Rogers. We hope to start ASAP. This is four classrooms, basically the reason for this is at Reynolds, we have room to add six. At Rogers, we have room to add four. This will be coming out on the academic wing, moving west towards Coit. And we have room to fit four in there while maintaining the portables that we still need for Rogers in this school year. And so this is four classrooms to start as soon as possible. Another August 1 finish to be completed before students are ready to arrive this August. Because it's a little smaller footprint, the price is smaller, but the same thing applies. The bid will be complete on Tuesday. We'll more than likely have a deductive change order for you, but also have a little bit of money to start phase two if we need to. Both of these projects, phase one is the easy part. Phase two is where it's going to get very interesting at Reynolds and Rogers with the amount of work that's going to have to go on with the building that is inhabited. But asking for approval for $3,117,023 tonight for Rogers.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bradley. Similar, any questions for comments for Dr. Bradley as he's up here right now? Okay, is there a motion for Rogers?
I make a motion. I move that the board approve the amendment to the guaranteed maximum price of $3,117,023 for Rogers Middle School as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? That is all six of us again, none opposed. That will take us to 9C and Ag Barn.
Yes, some members of the board, you'll recall that some time ago, you set aside $10 million out of the general budget for specific construction projects. This involved some money in redoing the Green Monster at Prosper High School, also bringing Prosper High School up to speed with LED lighting. And this is the third project that was a part of this discussion of $10 million was the addition of a maintenance facility. We have completely outgrown our current facility and an ag barn, a small animal barn adjacent to our current ag barn. Over the last couple of months, we've worked with VOK Architects. Ross Rivers is here tonight in the back. We've worked with them to get these projects designed. The maintenance barn will be going right next to Reynolds Middle School. The ag barn, as I said, just adjacent to the existing ag barn. We took this to bid the week before last, and you've seen the score sheet there as we graded out. But we have a new-to-us company, certainly familiar to us in Prosper, but new to us in Prosper ISD that I'm recommending tonight, Crossland Construction. I've got a team of folks back here, I'm going to call out Brian Rose, but he has several guys with him from Crossland. You will see that they came in with a bid of $7,760,000. I do want to note that there was a bid that was lower in price, but as we graded that sub, we found that they had left out scope of work. And so not only did Crossland grade higher, but they are actually the low bid as well. And so this project, if all goes according to plan, would break ground in March as well and would complete on December 31, 2024, according to the schedule that Crossland has provided to us. And so a new team for us, recommending Crossland Construction tonight for this ag barn and maintenance facility.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Bradley. Again, questions, comments for Dr. Bradley while we have him up here? Okay, in that case, for maintenance building and the ag barn, which specifically, I think, swine, pig, is that what we're, is that what? All right, there we go. Piggies, that's what she, lovely. All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the contract for the maintenance building in Ag Barn as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? That is all six of us, none opposed. So congratulations to them. All right, takes us to 9D. Sell or something.
Ask permission to sell .0346 acres to TexDOT. Asking your permission because they're going to take it whether you agree to it or not. But asking you to sell this land, 1,500 square feet. We believe that the price that they've offered is fair. Just so you know, this is about the 380 widening. And this is a narrow strip of the 53 acres we own on the, what we believe will be the admin building, eventually admin, performing arts, and now a tour number two. There's a skinny piece of this that runs along the road there next to Brook Hollow. When they widen 380, they need this .0346 acres to make the turn lanes work coming off of 380. And so like I say, they're going to take it one way or the other, but we do feel this is a fair price and so recommending that we sell this tonight.
Perfect, and this is a good thing. So any questions real quick? Okay, is there a motion for 9D?
I move that the board approve the sale of .0346 acres to TexDOT as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Need discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? That's all six of us. 9E. Consideration and possible action regarding the selection of a firm to audit multiple construction projects.
Members of the board, you've received the grading sheet. We received three bids for this construction audit services, although one of the bids was not complete. And so it was basically disqualified. I did not provide the information we asked for. We had two others. And so last week, we went through these bids, worked together as a committee, evaluated them. You see the recommendation before you is Weaver and Tidwell. They are a large audit firm. They have audited numerous construction projects across many districts. They are also just a large audit firm that are not just construction only. They have a lot of capabilities. And so as we went through and graded the personnel and the proposals, you see the recommendation before you is Weaver and Tidwell.
Perfect. Any questions for Dr. Bradley? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I moved that the board approve Weaver and Tidwell LLP to audit multiple construction projects as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. I think you got that just for you, Mr. Van Wolf.
Do it.
Okay, discussion on this? Anyone? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor? That is all six of us, none opposed. And that takes us to, we do not have anybody for public comment on non-agenda items this evening. So we will turn it back over to you, Dr. Ferguson.
Yes, so well, esports is part of the superintendent's report. I explained to the young man who's sitting next to me in that picture that my sister, we had an Atari when we were kids and that she consistently beat me, so much so that I would ask her to trade joystick with me because I knew that that was the key difference. He looked at me like I had seven heads and he was like, let's just talk about how you're going to build this city. And so he was extremely patient with me and really taught me a lot of different things within this virtual world. And our students, the level of engagement in this class is incredible, like so much so that Ms. Robinson, who was teaching, had to say, y'all, get quiet. Dr. Ferguson needs to do a small video because they're like yelling at the screen and talking and collaborating and trying to figure out how to beat the game in front of them. Never in a million years did I think in education that we would have a gaming class. But these kids are able to get scholarships, they're able to go to different competitions, which our kids, I know you all as the board, we got to honor them, I believe, last summer for their accomplishments. So they are striving for even more awards to come our way. But this is just one of the great examples of the innovative learning that we provide in Prosper ISD. And when we had the superintendent visit with the 200 superintendents and leaders from across the state, this was a, we must stop here, we want to see this because this is not something that every single school district has. So it is kind of a next level program for our kids and one that they truly, truly love. And I'm very thankful for that young man's patience.
So what were you doing, Dr. Ferguson, in that?
Well, so Ms. Robinson, the teacher, she was like, here, I'll log you in for me. Cover your ears, Mr. Dave Velasco. So I start pushing buttons without like really waiting for directions, just started going right. And she walks by and lets out kind of a scream. And the young man next to me starts laughing because she's like, you're destroying my city. What are you doing? And I'm like, well, I was just trying to make it do what I needed to. And he, of course, was very reassuring and said, don't worry, we'll build it back. I'll help you. But it was a lot of fun. It was very challenging, though, just the whole dexterity of your hand, knowing what to push and what to do to make things happen the way that they need to. And then going out in the forest to go get more wood to build more things. It was, I can see why the kids love it so much.
Made you long for pong again?
Donkey Kong, I was asking them if they had that. And they, again, looked at me like I had seven heads. So did not know what I was talking about. Then we had our Silver Stars Tour, of course. Anytime that we can bring our community in and have them engage with us. What I love about this group too, because we have a consistent and ongoing commitment to connecting with our community, it's not just a one-time event. So we have multiple tours specifically for our more seasoned citizens within our community and surrounding communities, because it's not just Prosper only that come to these events. But we usually do recruiting during our senior citizen Christmas lunch that our kids put on through our culinary arts and CTE programs. So we really promote it during that time. And then we have a tour for them after that. And then we promote the Blue Bonnet Brunch, which will be coming up in March for our senior citizens to once again connect with us. And so for them to be able to see what our schools are offering, but also to be able to engage with our youth, I think it just gives them hope for what our future looks like. Because I think sometimes kids get a bad rap and they don't need to. And so when our aging community is able to come in and see what our kids are actually doing today, they're blown away by the fact of what our kids can do, but also what our kids are afforded in Prosper ISD thanks to each and every one of you for making these dreams come true for them. So they're extremely impressed and they love being able to see. And I will say, our culinary, we went to Hardee's, to the restaurant at Walnut Grove, and they got a full breakfast. So that was a big hit, right? And so I'm sure people didn't have lunch and dinner that day. Or that's how it goes with my mom, usually, I'm just full, I'm full. So, but they were excited because they got to see our kids in action and using their culinary skills and engage with Coach Allison, our head football coach and athletic coordinator, as he was telling about Walnut Grove and the standard and how we're striving for better athletes to make better people. So a great event, so truly enjoyed that. About 30 or so, 25 to 30 participants, so it was a good group. And then Joyce Hall Day, of course, the amazing Joyce Hall, who continues to just be a bright light in all things Prosper ISD. So Ms. Dixon and Mr. Linker were able to join me for Joyce Hall Day. And she made her walk through the hallway and the kids had their pom poms and they're cheering and they're yelling and so excited to see her because it is truly like a famous person has come into their space. And they all had on their Joyce Hall shirts. And so to honor her, and then Ms. Romero and her staff had done a great job of setting up a nice reception for her with many gifts to honor Joyce Hall. And of course, Joyce Hall is going to spend multiple hours reading every single thing. But what she loved too is that the kids sang for her. And there is no greater joy for a former educator than when they get to see what our youth are doing currently. And then to have her name on that building, just the pride that she was beaming with. I wish I could have bottled it.
Her smile in that picture is incredible.
Yeah, she's an exceptional lady. So we're very excited. And she actually serves on our naming committee also with some of you as board members, as well as other community members. So we love to have her input because she has a lot of history and just valuable knowledge about our district. And that's all.
All right, thank you. We will now enter into closed session according to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Sections 071, 072, 074, and 076. Thank you very much. All right, we are back from executive session. The time is now 10:18 PM. Let's see here, we are moving to, what is this, 13. Consideration and possible action regarding hiring of contract personnel. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move that the board approve the hiring of contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. All in favor? That is all six of us. Let's see here, consideration and possible action regarding land purchase.
I move that the board approve the purchase of 13.6 acres in the northwest corner of the school district boundaries for $1,894,395.62 as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? That is all six of us as well. And that takes us to the end of our meeting. Thank you all very much for joining us this evening. The time is now 10:20 and we are done. Good night.